Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was from the presentation on the budget, I think. It's still been like that.
This is a public meeting.
It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee who has a comment or a question on any matter that's before the Board today. There are copies of the meeting agenda on the table when you enter the meeting room, along with a set of the materials for the one business item that is before us today. We are starting an hour later today. We had a storm overnight and there were several delays in the start of school, as well as road closures that necessitated the hour-later start time for today's meeting. Item number two is approval of the minutes. There's a set of minutes for the regular meeting held on February 11th. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? If there are no changes, there are motions to approve without objection, then there's a special Board meeting set of minutes for the meeting that was held on February 17th. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented? So, second without objection. Item number three is first selectman updates. I just have a couple of items for today's meeting to update you on. The Budget Committee of the Board of Estiment and Taxation continues to deliberate over the budget. Tomorrow is consolidation day, and on Monday is decision day. We continue to work with town's professional staff to address a number of questions related to various items contained within the operating and capital budget. I must commend the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, and all others who've been very forthcoming with detailed explanations for the various capital improvement projects that are sought over the course of the next fiscal year, as well as explaining the importance of the staffing initiative for the fire services. Our office is in the process of completing a public information piece which will go out to the media, hopefully either later today or tomorrow. Once again, informing and educating people as to the merits of the staffing proposal, as well as the Northwest Station. That station is specifically going to provide service to both Greenwich Emergency Medical Services and to the Greenwich Fire Services. So, stay tuned, there'll be more information, continued lobbying for that critical life safety need here in the town of Greenwich. I want to thank everyone who's been involved with that. I also want to thank the selectmen who have advocated for it. Thank you very much for your support. The town administration, led through the selectmen's office and the town administrator, have continued to interview candidates for the position of Purchasing Director in Administrative Services. I believe we are down to two candidates that are going to be brought forth for further interview, and we hope to have that position filled, at least in terms of an announcement, in the next several weeks. In addition, we have completed the interview process for the position of Executive Assistant to the First Selectman. A decision will be forthcoming in the next day or two, as we look at reference checks and we make a conditional offer. So, I expect to announce that certainly by the next meeting, if not before. This Wednesday, I was able to join our very capable team of professionals up at the Connecticut Siting Council in New Britain for purposes of reviewing and testifying on docket 461, which is the Eversource Energy Application for Construction Maintenance in operation of 115 kilovolt bulk station, as well as underground transmission circuits extending 2.3 miles between the proposed substation and the existing COSCOB station. Representing the town's interests was Town Planner Katie DeLuca, DPW Commissioner Amy Seibert, Conservation Director Denise Savageo, and Superintendent of Parks Bruce Spayman. The Siting Council posed several questions to our managers. I think they handled them very deftly in terms of our concern. The primary one is, is there a validated need? Mrs. DeLuca was fairly explicit in looking at the mathematic calculation. When you look at what's needed in documents and what's proposed, there seems to be an alternate that the town feels can be employed in an intervening period by adding some transformers in COSCOB. We'll see. That was researched by Katie on her own diligence and presented. So, that was issue number one. Two, if they do go forward with the new substation, we made it abundantly clear, we do not want to go through Bruce Park because of the potential environmental concerns about having petroleum-filled lines under the ground. There was a lot of pushback on that in terms of, you know, we run other types of infrastructure under the ground. Commissioner Seibert, I thought, was very apropos in saying, while wastewater is an ugly subject, wastewater has the ability to dissipate over time, whereas synthetic chemicals tend to remain. So, there's a very clear-cut reason why we're concerned about that happening. So, considerable back-and-forth by attorneys for Eversource posing questions, say deposing our folks. We had several residents in attendance. We had Cece and Robert Morgan, who live on Kinsman Lane, as well as Christine Edwards, who filed for intervenor status. Ms. Edwards actually posed questions to our folks on issues of, are there alternate energy sources that can mitigate the need for having this? She brought up several points about what steps we've taken to use renewable energy. So, the good news is, I think our folks did a tremendous job, and I applaud them. The not-so-good news is that we have to go back on Thursday, March 10th, for a continuation of this. It is Thursday, March 10th, 2016, at 10 Franklin Square, beginning at 1:00 p.m. At this time, the Office of Consumer Counsel is going to submit exhibits that were introduced on Tuesday and continue their questioning. So, stay tuned. Certainly, again, applaud the management team. Another element of this which will require support, undoubtedly, we were required and needed to engage outside counsel, familiar with this regulatory process. We will likely be having to seek funding if it cannot be realized within existing budgets to cover the cost of this. But frankly, in my mind, there's really no choice to pursue that when you have such a significant utility project underway in your community. So, kudos to them at planning Public Works, Parks, as well as Conservation. Monday, final thing, Monday, working closely with Liberation Programs in the Greenwich Department of Social Services, we are going to be holding a press conference to talk about a partnership project to determine the extent of heroin use and opioid addiction in the town of Greenwich. Certainly, this is not a new issue that afflicts just Greenwich. It's nationwide. It's been brought up even at the presidential debate level. It's something that the Southwestern Region Council of Governments put forward a task force. We were fortunate, I think, several months ago to have Alan Mathis from Liberation Programs here with us to present what they do. I know you see this, Mr. Marzullo, on a day-to-day basis with what you do professionally, but it's serious. It's something that, you know, in my mind, some people, it can't control, you know? It's not their fault. And so, I think the purpose of this is to better understand it, the scope of it, the impact it's having, and what we could do as a community, not just the selectmen, but everybody, to help combat it. So, again, thanks to Dr. Berry and his team for joining with me on this, but, you know, if we could save one life, it would well worth the effort. What time is that press conference? 12:30 in the Cone Room.
On Monday?
Yep. And there'll be a more formal press release coming out, but, you know, they presently provide service to us, and, you know, it brings up a point, and perhaps editorializing, in the budget discussions that occurred, there was a question about, we send 300,000, roughly, monies through the Department of Social Services to various non-for-profit agencies. And one of the members said, "Well, gee, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is nothing but just a bunch of money. How do we know what we get for it? It may be inconsequential because it's 5,000 or 15,000 here." And the response that was given was that the monies that are allocated go through a very careful screening process by the Board of Social Services and other community partners, and are targeted to specific programs that address a problem. So, it's not just like, "Well, gee, we like the shelter for the homeless. We're going to give them $15,000." They provide us with specific data that says, "Well, you know, we handle 25 people that may have a connection to the town of Greenwich," or "We saw so many people who've come through Liberation." So, I raised that because I thought it was unfortunate that that was presented in that way, in the fact that social services has come a long way in following what had been, frankly, a BET edict for years in terms of, you know, outsource services to providers that have the expertise to do it. They've done just that, and I think it's been very effective, and I think they should be commended for doing so. And again, I think, related to my update, this has a direct correlation with what they're going to do for us. That concludes my reports. I know Selectman Marzullo, who is the ex-officio member for the Board of Selectmen on the New Lebanon Building Committee, would like to update us as to what he's been working on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, it was reported in the paper today that, so the Building Committee yesterday voted for to descend the budget that was presented to us onto the BET Budget Committee. I want to first say, the Building Committee was only in receipt of the actual budget. It was the first time we laid eyes on the actual numbers one hour prior to that. So, there was not enough time to thoroughly, you know, vet the budget, or the budget, or make suggestions, or challenge, you know, or actually even comment necessarily whether we think it's, you know, over budget or not. There just wasn't enough time. I mean, so, I did recommend, you know, quite a few times that we take a, you know, step back for us to review, and if there were cuts to be made, you know, give us enough time to do it before you send it to the BET on Friday that inevitably will be placed on hold tomorrow. So, all that did was delay to them, because I've heard that that will be, you know, and just quickly, for my two colleagues, the budget, you know, consists of three parts. I mean, when you factor out the modules that were 2 million, it's now about 2.5 million, and then the field itself, $500,000. You have the third part, which was the school itself. And that part, when you compare it to the number that has been given to us informally, is about $1.9 million over that number. But in fairness, once again, to this budget, this is the first time we have real numbers. You know, and so, I mean, that's important. So, people that are saying that, "Well, it's over budget," or "You have to bring it below budget," that's not comparing an apple to an apple, because, once again, I'll say this over and over, you know, I'll say this over and again, this is the first time I'm receiving this budget. So, I mean, that's important to point out. You know, and also, there, and the reason why the $1.9 million, it is over compared to whatever, the school itself is 4,000 square feet bigger than what was proposed, not from the EdSpecs' point of view, from the original architect's point of view. So, that's the makeup. So, I guarantee inevitably there'll be discussion about that, too, tomorrow. So, stay tuned for tomorrow. I will say, too, there's one other piece of this. I have recommended over and over again that, in terms of the modules itself, the soil testing that is inevitably going to be required at Western Middle School should be conducted, you know, sooner rather than later, because inevitably, if there's going to be cleanup there, we have to factor in how that's going to affect, you know, the monetary bottom line from the school's point of view, but also in terms of where they're going to house these kids, if, in fact, it tests positive for something. So, that has to be, that, Steve, you know, the chairman's aware of, and I just want to let you two know that nothing has been done in terms of soil testing there, in terms of MI, in terms of what they're going to do. That's a big piece that has to be addressed at some point.
Where are they proposing to put the, that would necessitate them to even have to ...
And, Mr. Chairman, that's a great question, too. They don't know that yet. And that's, that's, there's only, they're limited in terms of the spot, but I think where they're proposing is going to require, if it does encroach on the field, et cetera. If they keep it just on the blacktop itself, it's all self-contained, so no. But that has to be worked out, because, once again, the kids have to go somewhere, and if you factor that out, and you factor out, that has to be addressed pretty soon.
Does that include using some of the existing school building in addition to the modulars?
It could, and they're working that out, too.
Because when it was Glenville, maybe, does anyone remember? When they had, when we had the modulars for Glenville, I thought all the kids were, like, in the area, not on the grass, on the parking.
It was my understanding, it was on the ...
It was in the parking lot?
Yeah.
And did some of the kids go into the school, like the W Wing? Didn't the fifth grade or something go?
I don't think so.
They brought them, when they had the modulars there for Glenville, if I remember correctly, they had all of the classroom activities in the modulars, and they brought them inside, I believe, for gym and lunch. I think were the only two things that they brought them into the building for, when they couldn't do gym outside, that is. I mean, they did gym outside when they could, but everything else was in the modulars, I believe.
So, stay tuned until tomorrow about this number. I mean, I, so ...
So, is what's happening tomorrow?
Tomorrow, the BET, Steve Walker will be coming and addressing the Budget Committee tomorrow.
Do you know what time?
I think it's 9:30.
That's too bad.
I think so. I think it's 9:30.
No, I'm not. I'm voluntary in the hospital, so I don't want to ...
But that's pretty good. Stay tuned.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your service on that. Mr. Tonner, you're our ex-officio member on the Harbor Management Commission. Do you want to update us as to what's happening there?
Yeah, last night, there was a Harbor Commission, Management Commission meeting. It was a subcommittee meeting on the mooring regulations that they're putting together. These regulations are going to be an addendum to the Harbor Management Commission's basic documentation. There was a lot of good give and take that got down into the weeds at times, but that was fine, because people had concerns, whether they be boaters or yacht club members, or people that are associated with the industry of, you know, putting moorings in place. But like I said, it was a very good meeting, very productive, and the people that attended should be commended for their input.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, the next item on our agenda is new business. There's no old business. With us today, we have Melissa Evans, who's the Traffic Operations Coordinator in the Department of Public Works, and she is presenting to us a request to establish a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit for Indian Head Road. The Engineering Division received this request from a resident to post speed limit signs, and they've reviewed the street and revealed that there was no approved speed limit. So, they did an investigation, and it was determined that this is the appropriate speed. And I would just highlight that this is a good example of the type of interaction that occurs with residents and our departments, and the responsiveness that our departments provide to residents. So, we welcome you. We haven't seen you in a while, so welcome.
I know. Well, thanks. I didn't know that there's much else to say. No, we did, as you mentioned, we got an email, actually, from a resident on Indian Head Road who lives close to Riverside. She's at Number 31. She's closer to the beginning of the street, if you will. And she expressed concern with the speed of traffic. They have a lot of people in the neighborhood who like to walk their dogs, who just like to walk, who jog. There are a couple of bus stop locations for schools along the street. They don't have sidewalks. And over the last couple of years, she's mentioned, there's been an increase in construction, rebuilding of homes in the neighborhood, and they do get a lot of traffic through there. So, she asked that we look at doing something. We did our investigation, as you mentioned, and realized that there was no established speed limit for the street. So, we did some traffic counts and are presenting the recommendation that'd be posted for 25 miles per hour.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, how far down does Indian Head Road go, just toward the blue stops?
Well, that's the public, right. So, the public road goes down, I get my little map here. The public road goes all the way down to where the blue stops, and then there's a little piece at the end that becomes private. I don't know if the name changes or not, to be honest with you, because we don't, we don't go, I don't, you know, go down there, but ...
Well, that's where I live, so, on the water there.
I have driven down to that point. I have driven down to that point where the fences are, but it is private after that point, so.
And it starts at St. Paul's?
Right. It starts at Riverside Avenue, and then it goes down. And it does have a few, you know, curves. At Cedar Cliff, there's a nice little curve, curvy section. And 25 tends to be, you know, reasonable and appropriate for residential streets like
So, is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
Should move.
Second without objection. Thank you very much. While Deputy Commissioner Jim Michael is here, one of the things that I wanted to update that I did, I just recalled seeing you, is we saw it was announced in the paper about the grant for the congestion mitigation air quality.
Yes.
I believe for Glenville.
Yes.
And perhaps while we have the, you hear, I heard some peripheral comments about, I would say, I've been aware of this for a long time, predating my tenure as First Selectman, probably going back to when I was on the town meeting, having lived there. It's been a longstanding problem, and I just want to, one, personally commend the department for pursuing this, very patient. I mean, it's been years in the making, and perhaps use this as an opportunity to educate people who are wondering, "Well, where did this come from?" Because I know one of our BET members seemed to have a bewilderment about, "Well, why was this area picked in?" So, perhaps you could tell us.
Right. It's a location, we looked at, that we hear quite often and have heard quite often from, and deals with all the activity in that corridor on Glenville Road, primarily from Weaver Street over to Riversville and a little bit beyond. There's a large volume of traffic. We've done some traffic counts at that specific intersection. There's nearly 15,000-plus vehicles per day going through that intersection, which, in some areas of Route 1, that approaches that number. So, it's a heavy volume of traffic coming through that stretch. There's the school there, there's the firehouse. So, it's an opportunity that we look at for improving the roadways, the traffic signals. There's some challenges with on-street parking through there that we want to look at. So, we applied for this grant. It's a grant through the State and Federal Highway Administration for doing this improvement, and we were lucky enough to be selected this time. They come out for these grants every two to three years for requests. We received approximately $2.75 million back in 2012 to do the Arch Street Exit 3 corridor, which we're in the design stages. We'll be looking at doing the final construction on that probably next year. But this one will be starting design over the next six months or so. That design process generally takes a couple of years, and then construction will take a couple more years. So, realistically, before you see something done over there, would probably be 2020, based on past experience with these programs, but it's, the work's starting, so.
And I just want to, I just want to compliment you. The other thing that relates to congestion mitigation air quality that you raised in Exit 3, I did get a letter from Norwalk State Senator Bob Duff that a constituent of his who commutes into Greenwich has concerns about Exit 3, and I thought, perhaps, if I forward it to you, you could compose a response to him and make him aware that we are recipients of funding. We have a design in place, and that a solution is soon to be on the horizon.
Yes, correct. That's fine.
And I do want to also acknowledge and thank you for your contributions you make at the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, as well as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which funnels a lot of the monies to the region for transportation-related projects. And, you know, Jim is our principal representative and deals a lot with the other communities where it's, where it's an allocation process, and you have to make your best case, because everybody's saying, "Well, why did you get this, and why did you get that?" And again, I thank you for that. I know you sat through that very long meeting last Wednes, Thursday.
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, I'm looking forward to seeing what you're going to do there, because I, you know, the condominiums, I come down the hill and turn left rather than right, and go down the Comely Avenue, and come all the way back up again, rather than try to go through that traffic.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Also, it's not related to your area of expertise. I didn't know, we also receive funding through the state Small Town Economic Existence Program for the YWCA Domestic Abuse Services. This is something that has been long in the making. We applied several years ago, and it's going to assist them in replacing roofing, HVAC, and make their facility functional, further functional for the demand of people. So, that was a positive development. And also, I received yesterday, or the day before, a letter from CHAFA, Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, which was more an advisory, that the Housing Authority of the town of Greenwich is in queue for funding for the Armstrong Court project. So, again, I know this board has supported it, and the gentleman who sent the letter was asking for comment from the chief elected official. I forwarded it to Mr. Brannion, so that we send a letter within the prescribed time saying that this board, not just me, this board supports the efforts of the Greenwich Housing Authority to improve the facilities at Armstrong Court, and really throughout the town.
Can I just, the Housing Authority, too? I don't know if you want to come. I think there's been some unfair, you know, with the needs assessment, I've been following what you've been, but there's some unfair, you know, things being said that I don't, I think they're substantiated in fact. I mean, I don't need to ...
No, no, that's a good point. So, just as a ...
I respect your response. It was right on.
As a corollary to what Mr. Marzullo was raising, we received commentary from representatives of the United Way's Needs Assessment Committee, as well as, I received only one individual resident concern, both on-air at WGCH and here at my office, for which I spoke to them about. And, of course, the Greenwich Free Press has decided to make this an expose, but the simple fact is that the properties that are under the aegis of the Housing Authority of the town of Greenwich, which is a quasi-governmental agency, not directly affiliated with the town of Greenwich, are overseen by Federal Housing and Urban Development and the State Department of Housing. They are under rigorous regulatory standards in terms of their condition. And while there are specific apartments that may be suffering from issues, whether it be pests, whether it be mold, I think the appropriate point, and it's a very direct point, is that there's a lot to be said for the people who occupy the apartment maintaining the housekeeping of it. Because last evening, I was fortunate to receive an email from Mr. Anthony Johnson that shows several apartments at Wilbur Peck Court that look like they're model apartments. I mean, the way they're maintained, the way that they're furnished, and so, again, there's always going to be exceptions to the rule, but unfortunately, the use of, call it media to highlight one person's plight and cast a pall over everybody is wrong. And I think the genie is back in the bottle in terms of looking at requisite solutions. And as I said to the person who spoke to me, is that I'm happy to visit any property. I've been there before, but I'm not going to go into a property unaccompanied by the Housing Authority, who is the underlying landlord. I think they have the right to be there, to see firsthand what's being shown, and address it, for which I'm confident they ... it, for which I'm confident they have. They've shown me documents as to contracts they have with different service companies. They've accelerated service. So again, it's unfortunate in this day and age, everything plays out in the media if someone has an agenda to do so, but you have to, to your point, I think you're really saying, there should be fairness in what's, in fact. And I know that Ms. Rutger's comment, his column, is going to reflect that as well. So again, as I said to the individual, if they have a specific concern, and it's health-related, then let's work on addressing their concern, priority number one. Is there a fact, an issue? Get them in another apartment. But to say, well, we want the whole place condemned and tossed out, well, you're going to displace over 100 families. And is there grounds to do so? I think there's short-term, intermediate-term, long-term. Long-term, as you could see with the announcement about the financing application, the Housing Authority is moving forward to rehabilitate their properties. And so, again, in fairness to them, I think it's only right.
Well said.
So that concludes business. There's appointments and nominations. Do we have any that we'd like to act on today? Okay. So where we.
Just a question. The Snap Committee, does the First Selectman decide that, or does the Board Selectman?
The Board does. Yep. So just so you gentlemen know, I think I copied it, but if I didn't, here's what was sent to the RTM, just as a, so we sent Karen Sadekhan, Louise Puchel for Nathaniel Witherall, Lyle Gibbons for Harbor Commission, John Sluzars for Alarms Appeals, Nisha Hirsch for Nathaniel Witherall, Carol Burns for Commission on Aging, William Ingraham for the Harbor Management Commission. In addition, we sent the four other, let's see, three. Kurt Patrick for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Steve Sertelman for the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as Wayne Sullivan as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there, I think 11, there were 11 that were forwarded to, and Nancy Kaplan for Parks, that were forwarded to the town clerk, in addition to the ones that are there from prior meetings. So they've got quite a bit of work to do, and I'm desiring to schedule an appointment with John Eddy, who chairs the Appointments Committee, to reconcile where we are, and he's offered to assist us in helping find people, because we're really, really in need of people for planning and zoning, and my concern is that we not be in a position where we have a quorum. And I think if that's the case, then we're responsible for that outcome.
Sure.
Is there any other?
How do we get names off of this list?
Once the board's filled, I think they could put them in a different format. I mean.
Is there a names that have been there since I came a year ago?
Yep. There's no executive session items. I will just say that one of our next meetings, the Law Department is going to bring forward to us a draft for policy for pool access. This is something that's come up in the context of the BET's discussions. To my knowledge, and you could answer for your, I've never been asked by any member of the BET for the policy, or, you know, so I did hear about it through discussions of the, so I think we've all been on record saying we're happy to address that. I think Mr. Fox is going to provide to us, really, what our other communities do. I mean, it's not, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. New Canaan has a policy, there's another community. There's one other community in addition, New Canaan, that has a policy that we can use as a template, and certainly gives preference or priority to residents. And so he'll bring that forward, and in keeping with our tradition, we'll likely hear it at one meeting, and then, you know, take comment and vote at the next. So I know that's coming down the pike soon. Okay? If not, there's no other further business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, without objection.